To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Nick.
Yes.
Role.
Alderman Tobin. Alderman Jean-François.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green. Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Correspondence.
We have a standardized notice form for 30-day advance notice for a liquor license for Antojitos Mangu Middletown Restaurant Corp.
Received and filed.
Thank you. That's it for this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Hello and good evening. My name is Marilyn Torley and I work over at Fei Tian College in Middletown. For those who are not familiar with our college, it is a nonprofit four-year college. We have degree programs such as data science, biomedical, we have graphic arts, art management and dance, oh, and computer quantum computing, which is just something new that we've added. And the reason I'm here this evening is I would like you to be aware that we just started a program called Friendship Families. We have a lot of international students. We have students from Germany and Ireland, Japan, China, Vietnam, many, many different countries, and we want to give them the opportunity to better understand America and the traditions that we hold so dear. And we feel the best way of doing that is to connect our families here in Middletown to our students. What does that look like? It's not meaning that they're going to be living with you. It means that if you go out on an outing, you go to a picnic, you, there's so many wonderful things to do here in the Hudson Valley, that you would be connected with one of the students and you'd create a relationship that would last the year. Our request is that you spend at least one opportunity with them a month. So whether it's, as I said, an outing, a football game, something for, you know, harvest time of the year, and we just wanted to let everyone know that this program is starting and that we have a process for, you know, being interviewed and you get to know the student before you go on and create that relationship, and we appreciate the time that the families would take with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello, good evening. Vanessa Sid, 7 Linden Avenue. I'm here today just to remind you all that I'm gonna keep reaching out in regards to ETPA, but also to offer some suggestions, just because there was a meeting held two weeks ago. It was a public hearing for citizen input for the annual action plan, and a lot of people that I had spoken to had not heard about it, and when I went to look back at the paper, the physical newspaper, it was literally this, this length, not readable, and if it's someone that doesn't read the paper anymore, or you don't buy it, or you don't have a subscription, you wouldn't have seen it. So I just ask that the next time that this meeting is scheduled, or if another one is to be made before the year ends, we could work together to make sure that more people in the community know about it and can make it so that they can also give their input. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Ramirez. Marks for the mayor.
Yes, first I want to open with thanking Fei Tian College. I think it's a great program, and hopefully many people in our community will take advantage of it. I also need to have an executive session to discuss some contractual issues with some of our vendors, or a couple of our vendors, and we can do that at the end of the meeting if we so choose. And also, just a quick point on Vanessa's point, the meetings are advertised, agendas are posted, we do take ads out and legal notices as required, meetings are posted on our website, public hearings are posted, and the folks have a responsibility to look for information to the city. We can't contact 30,000 people or spend thousands and thousands of dollars putting up a notice on every meeting that will be held at City Hall. Community development in some years past has had that public hearing well-attended, and in some years, people seem not to take so much of an interest in it. But, but the meetings, not only do we comply with the legal requirements of posting legal notices, but we do quite a bit of outreach, and unfortunately, or fortunately, she was aware of the meeting and was here, so I'm not sure what the concern was, because obviously Vanessa and her organization did know about the meeting. So, just to clarify that, that we do follow all the, not only the appropriate protocols but requirements, but we do go above and beyond. Tonight, you're also gonna, you have a resolution in front of you, or no, a resolution going into committee regarding the fire exemption, a proposal that was drafted by myself and Mary Ann, along with our corporation counsel, Alex Smith, Mary Ann being our assessor, and it is the volunteer firefighters' property tax exemption, and we're basically recommending to the council that we tie it into our Lo Sap program. This was an option by the state. The school district is adopting one also. I think it's similar. Others is based on service also. We specify the service has to meet Lo Sap requirements. So I'm assuming the council president will put it into committee, and the committee will make their recommendations to the full council. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
A question for the mayor?
Okay, thank you.
Marks of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. I also want to know, as the mayor mentioned, about the public hearing notices. It is in English and Spanish, the notices, so I just wanted to also add that. The IDA had their meeting tonight. We worked on the proposed budget to submit to the state, just like we do for the Community Development Agency. Also, you have a resolution tonight hoping to, for support on the increase on the cap for the homeownership program, which you all know is a very successful program that the Community Development Agency has been running for the past few years, and I believe we're up to 15, 16 new homeowners in our, in our city. So we have some more homes on the books that are gonna be ready to be rehabbed and get some more folks moving into our city with a very nice rehabbed property. Also, our pumpkin event last week was a success at the farmer's market. We gave out over 300 pumpkins. Thank you Run for Downtown for purchasing the pumpkins for the giveaway. Also Cheryl, one of our bid board directors, board of directors and owner of SubQ Tattoo was there helping the kids paint all the pumpkins, so it was a good time despite the weather. This Friday, at the Paramount, we have the Hudson Valley International Film Festival. They'll be there for that opening night movies. Harathon Weekend, October 27th, 28th, 29th, and also, still looking for that perfect tree for downtown for Christmas. We got some inquiries and we're, we're doing our scouting, but if anyone, please contact us, 343-8075, the bid office, or my office, 346-4170, and that's all I have for this evening.
Quick question. Is the IDA still allowed to do pilots?
Yes, we just had a successful one, we just did Polycraft on the industrial drive, so we did a pilot, sales tax exemption, and that was a great project, bringing close to 135 jobs to our city.
Correct, okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Maria. Fire chief.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank the mayor, council, Jacob, for showing up for inspection night, the night before the parade, even though, you know, despite all the requests to cancel the parade, it's never been canceled in 160 years. Had some people trying to convince me to cancel the parade, but Mother Nature held off, gave us two hours, and we got it in. So it was a great day. We got the parade in, everybody was happy, and I want to congratulate the police department. They won best color guard in the parade that day, so kudos to them. And just want to let everybody know, the foundation base will be poured this Saturday for Fireman Joe, and that's the first step for the granite to go on. Rotolo will be there doing the wiring for it, and then we'll get Fireman Joe back here. And Jacob was right, it does kind of look like me.
Alderman Massey. Chief, you have any idea how the reservoirs are doing?
Oh, yes, the reservoirs are at 98%.
You gotta say at least 100. Alderman Tobin.
I know you've given to us in the past, but do you know at the top there, they mentioned the Lo Sap, or do you know how many people are in the, qualify for the Lo Sap?
That qualified this past year was, I believe, 33.
And how many live in this city? Is it all 33, you think?
Pretty much all 33 of them live in this city.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, chief.
Just, they do have to be homeowners, correct? Yes, okay. So just let, not all of them are homeowners, so it's, it's not that high of a number. Any other questions?
Thank you, chief. Acting police chief.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of Chief Awanchu. He is out in San Diego at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, which is kind of the premier law enforcement conference of over 16,000 law enforcement professionals from all over the world, so we're very thankful that we get that opportunity for him to attend there, and he brings a lot of different resources, networking and training that's very, very valuable to our agency. I'd like to congratulate Chief Barber on an outstanding parade. I guess we did, we did win best non-firematic color guard, and Chief Awanchu and I did get an opportunity to march. It was nice, the rain held out, and it was a really great event for them to showcase what an outstanding fire department we have to complement our outstanding police department. We have Halloween coming up, so we would just like to remind all the parents, there will be a curfew in effect. The common council usually votes on that for us and puts that in effect so that we can help keep the streets safe and clear for Halloween. So just keep your kids inside, enjoy it, have fun. We'll have extra resources out in the field. We'll be going around giving out candy, so if you see our police officers on Halloween, make sure you hit them up and shake them down for some candy that we're more than happy to give out.
Okay, any question for acting chief? Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I heard at the police commission that we have an animal control officer now.
That is correct. He's actually, he was one of our dispatchers, Marcus Small, so he comes to us with about three or four years of experience as a police dispatcher, born and raised in Middletown. His dad works for DBW, so he definitely knows the city of Middletown inside out, upside down and backwards, and he'll be able to address a lot of those animal complaints that we were handling as a police department. It's really nice to have that resource back where it belongs, and he's there to serve the community in any way possible.
And he'll actually start when? I mean, he's-
He's already working. His first official day, I believe, was last Monday.
Last Monday.
Yes, the 9th.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk.
Just a quick reminder, early voting will begin on Saturday, October 28th. Here in the city of Middletown, it'll take place at the Middletown Senior Center. The hours go anywhere from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The full schedule's available on the city website, so make sure you get out and vote, and I believe you still have a few days left to register to vote.
Any question for the city clerk? Recreation?
Good evening. I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions? Alderman Witt.
Oh, no.
Good evening. So I happen to drive by Wolslara Field recently, and it looks great, and I saw a couple of people walking there, and since the school, during the school day, the tracks are not available to be used, and because the daylight is getting less and less, what are the hours for that facility for people to be able to walk on there?
The sun's out, you're welcome to walk on a track.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Here, anyone who would like to come up?
Yes, either, this is, Jerry, why don't you come up too, because you're a member of the Historical Society, and this is 100 years for the Middletown Walk Hill Precinct, the Historical Society, and it was, you know, Jerry's been very active in the society, and we also have with us tonight Peter Lascaris, if he would come up. I think, is Peter's in the room? Peter is our city historian, and on behalf of the city, you know, we'd like to present a plaque, or proclamation to you, a certificate of recognition, thanking the Historical Society for all they do for the city, so wanted to give it to Jerry, and Jerry, you can give a word at the parade. Peter's been the city historian for 38 years, so we have to give him one in two more years when he hits 40. All right, thank you.
Okay, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Tobin.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Jean-François?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Johnson?
A couple of things. The legislative committee, we have a worksheet, and I'm waiting for my handlers to put the material together. As soon as it's ready for presentation, we'll schedule the meeting. I guess by modicum of disclosure, I asked Dr. Torley to come this evening to talk about that Fei Tian program. I have recently become affiliated with the college as an adjunct professor. My students are the best. If you want to sponsor a student, pick one of mine. As Dr. said, my, my kids happen to come from Germany and Ireland. They came two months ago by themselves, no connection to anything other than Fei Tian College, living on a dorm. And college can be tough, language barrier can be tough, being in another continent could be tough, so if anybody's interested, you can certainly call the college, or you're always welcome to call me at my office, and we can facilitate communication. Thirdly, I'm always late to the party, and last Monday was something we call Columbus Day. And then as I was scrolling through various media, I realized it's called Indigenous Peoples' Day, and then I further realized that in some places, it is no longer called Columbus Day, it is called Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm not lobbying for anything like that, but on Earth Day, I took the opportunity to go up to Mohunk. They had a conference, Indigenous People, and the speakers were a member of the Linape Tribe and an environmental lawyer who's been doing it for about 40 years. I was totally out of my element, I didn't really know that much about what we were gonna talk about. Many people there had sponsored various programs. Indigenous peoples are still living their experience from the beginning. The chief left me with two, two phrases. One, when the big ships came, things did not go well. I don't think he really thought about Columbus, I think he thought about the big ships coming up to Hudson and things not going well. And when it came to protecting the environment, he offered the philosophy of his tribe, before you do something, ask permission. So it's just a little bit of things to think about. Once again, I'm not lobbying to not have Columbus Day anymore, but like many other groups in our society, we tend not to think about them until we do, and then we find out that they're still kind of recovering from what they experienced. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ray?
I'll just speak, the only thing I want to say tonight is, as we enter into the season of putting our leaves in the road, that we be really mindful of how far we put our leaves in the road. I, it's just, for me, I'm more of a bagger, because I don't like the wind blowing leaves right back on my lawn after I did all the work of raking them, but it is what it is. That's me and Jacob's conversation, but for those of us, it is a safety issue, it narrows our road, that's one, when they're wet and rainy, it's slippery and dangerous, so having your leaves, please really stick to the few feet from the curb, it is a safety issue. Please do not put your leaves out way too early, we do have a schedule so that they're not sitting out there for a month rotting in the rain and any weather that comes our way, so that is my only request for the good of the people that work and live here and our safety. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Chief Barber, congratulations, the fire parade, I don't know how you did it, it just rains constantly except during the fire parade, so you worked your magic, and I want to thank you and thank all the other out-of-town departments who came to join our parade, and also want to congratulate Sean Giraud, I know he's stepping down after many, many years as fire department secretary, so I thought the parade was, was quite, quite a great event. We had our constituents' meeting on Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I want to thank the mayor who came to our meeting and was very good at answering everybody's questions, so, thank you. It's that time of year where the warming station is getting ready to house people who need a place to stay overnight, and so that if you're able to volunteer at all, either for the overnight shift or for the two-hour shift before then, just helping to serve food, or this year, there's gonna also be a two-hour shift in the morning, because the soup kitchen does not serve their breakfast anymore, so people need a place to go between 7:00 and, and when everything opens up, so we're gonna try and be open another two hours. And training for that will be at 7:00 p.m. at the warming station, the old Mulberry House on Mulberry Street, and that's October 24th, October the 30th, and also November 8th, so I hope people will consider doing that. The warming station, we had a person at the warming station who, of the guests who stayed there, he had their trust completely, and this was Gary Textor. And Gary Textor is a pastor in Bloomberg Church, and Gary was almost a miracle worker in going out and trying to help people and trying to get them situated and get them in a better situation, and Gary was one of the first people to get COVID. And he was on a respirator for months. He was on, in the hospitals and at rehab for, I think, a total of nine months. He got home just before Christmas, and he's taken that opportunity to write a book now, and his book is called Finding Hope Within the Crisis. And if you look up Gary Textor on Google, you'll find this book all over the place, but I mention it now because he is gonna be doing a talk, a book signing and a talk on Saturday, October 21st, so next Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and that'll be at the Our Lady of the Assumption Church, and that's at 17 High Street in Bloomberg. So if you can make it, his doctors will be there, and they'll, they'll talk about the whole, it's, I don't want to say adventure, but the whole time and, and what he went through and the whole episode, so that'll be nice. And lastly, we did thank the mayor and thank the city clerk for the certificate. A lot of people do a lot of work for the Historical Society, and we had our 100th anniversary dinner this past Saturday. Nobody missed the solar eclipse, because of course, it was Saturday, it was raining all day, but that, that was, was really special, and I want to thank, well, I want to thank Andrew Green is also our councilman who can't be here tonight, but he's also on our board of directors, and Peter Lascaris, as you know, has been our city historian for, I mean, he must have started in grade school, 38 years, but he's also, at that time, been very productive in terms of writing the history of Middletown and the books, and there will be a new book coming out as soon as Chester Printing can get it, can get it together and get it printed. But also, I want to thank Jack McMahon, who, as you go out there and look in the display case on the left, there are a whole lot of literature from the Historical Society, a lot that Peter has written, some that Marvin Cohen, may he rest in peace, but Marvin was our answer man for anything we wanted to know, particularly about the fire department or railroads or cars, and so there, there are a lot of Middletown books there and a lot of information, and we're open Wednesday from 1:00 to 4:00, every Wednesday, at the Banduser House, 25 East Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Witt.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Massey. Good thing I have Jacob's time. 44 Prince Street. I just want the residents to know in that area, I've had several conversations with the mayor and Jacob, and it is being handled, thankfully, so I want those people over there to know that we haven't forgotten about them. Forum Diner, the people that live on Blanchard, they've contacted me and Kevin, and I know we've spoken with the mayor and Jacob, and once again, that's being taken care of, so I want those people to know that when they come, we do listen to them. Fire chief Nick Barber, it's almost time. You did an outstanding job as chief, and your leadership will certainly be missed. I know you're gonna stay around, but you won't be the top chief. Police officer Scott Mullin, he did a great job. About a week and a half ago, packages in my neighborhood were taken off of three porches. One of the porches happened to be mine, and within a 24-hour period, he solved the crime, found out who the person was, retrieved the packages. Thanks to the police department and especially Officer Mullin, as one of those packages, as I say, was mine, and I know the mayor would be disappointed if I didn't get him a Christmas present. Middletown business owner Ralph Carr today told me, he saw me and he wanted to send a message to everyone, he wanted to thank anyone that's involved in what's going on in, in Middletown, all of us, the administration, and how the beautification of Middletown is coming, and he thinks it's a wonderful thing. I'm almost done. Sunrise Hills. Kevin, the mayor, myself, and Jacob met with the residents there, and we want to thank you for inviting us to your meeting last week, and the follow-up we heard and we saw for ourselves, the issues, and we promise you that they are being looked at and will be taken care of. And finally, I want to thank the employees at Garnett Medical Center for the wonderful treatment I received a few weeks ago, and a special shout-out to Melissa, Betty and Janine in the observation unit. Thank you very much. Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, accepting a $462 donation from the United Way of Duchess, the Duchess Orange Region.
Resolution by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, any discussion? Role.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing an increase in the Community Development Agency's borrowing cap from the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Ray, any discussion? Role.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing budget transfers totaling $267,826.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Role.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ray, authorizing a $1,000 budget transfer for the table replacements at the senior center.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Role.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, requesting the county of Orange to exempt properties of the city of Middletown from certain county real estate taxes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Role.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, honoring the Historical Society of Middletown and the Walk Hill Precinct on their 100th anniversary.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Role.
Tobin. Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Local laws, nothing to audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to wish a warrant for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Alden Johnson.
Mr. President, I move we go to executive session to discuss a contractual matter.
Potential litigation.
And potential litigation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson. Do I have a second? Aldman Tobin, all in favor?
Aye.
We're now in the second session.